From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters, Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, July 26, 2022, 9:00 a.m. meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with a flag salute led by Supervisor Couch. And please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Please place your hands over your hearts. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, next, we're going to, we're going to call on Nick Cullen, our Director of Animal Services, to introduce our Pet of the Week. Come on out, Nick.
Good morning. Who do we have with us today, Nick?
Good morning. I have with me this morning Chiquito.
He's a...
Land shark.
He's embarrassed. I speak for him. He's embarrassed.
Is it Chiquito?
He's, he's not amused at all. But he's, he's a 10-year-old Chihuahua. He's a senior dog, and he needs some love. One of our volunteers just loves him and gave him a bath last night and got him ready for this morning. And he's ready for adoption. He's ready for his new home. So he's available for adoption right now.
All right. Well, thank you, Nick. Good luck, Chiquito. Thank you so much for sharing it.
And we're throwing in the costume, right, Nick?
Yes.
Yeah. Absolutely.
All right. Moving on now to the Consent Agenda. For those of you who would like to follow along, agendas are located on the two tables in the back near the doors. And all items listed with a CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. And so I will read the Consent Agenda item numbers now. Starting on page two, we have items three and four on consent, as well as seven and eight. On page three, all items nine through 16 are on consent. On page four, we have items 17 through 20 on consent, as well as, as well as items 22 through 25. However, item 20 has been withdrawn by the department and will not be considered. On page five, all items 26 through 30 are also on consent. So at this time, I'll ask if there's any members of the public present today that would like to make a comment on the consent agenda. Okay, I don't see any. I'll return to the board for questions, comments, or a motion to approve.
Salute.
You have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four eyes, one absence. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we return to page two on our agenda. We're, we have two items under Resolutions and Proclamations. First is item one. This is to proclaim August 2022 as Child Support Awareness Month in Kern County, and Supervisor Couch will make this presentation.
Motion on the proclamation.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four eyes, one absence. Supervisor Peters.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we all have kids. And you know what you feel when, for your, for your kids, your responsibility, your duty, your love. These folks, I don't know how many kids you have, but, well, no, I mean the ones you take care of. Not just yours, but all the other ones. You got your hands full with, with four of your own. But they take care of so many of the most vulnerable in our community and care for them. And I have a special place in my heart for what these folks do every single day. All of our employees do incredible work, but these people really advocate for not only the kids that they're representing, but sometimes it's the parents that want to do right but don't know how. And they walk them through the maze of the bureaucracy that's, that's needed. So I'll get off my soapbox here for a second, but I'll tell you why I'm really here. We're here to proclaim Child Support Awareness Month in Kern County. I'll read the proclamation. I'll turn it over to Liz. I know she has some things to say and some folks she wants you to, to meet. It reads, "The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed August 2020, excuse me, August 2022 as Child Support Awareness Month in Kern County. And this recognition has been entered in the official board minutes. It's been signed by our Honorable Chair, Zach Scrivner. It's dated today, July 26, 2022." And Liz Chavez, who runs the department, we'll ask her to come forward and say a couple things.
Thank you so much.
Bet.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivner and board members. Before I get started, I just wanted to say thank you to my team. These ladies here are actually on their way to Rosemont to provide backpacks. They're partnering with the library. They have an activity going on today, so they're going to be leaving soon to go and deliver the backpacks. But what I want, I ask that they come because these are the team members who deal with our customers on a daily basis and who provide the services to them. And I think it's important to recognize that through the efforts of my team, they've been able to raise the funds for the backpacks that we're going to distribute this, this year. And it's their heart to serve others. That's the most important part for me. So I have a little bit more to go over, but for me, that's really important, that they understand how much I appreciate them. So August is Child Support Awareness Month. This year's efforts are geared towards education of the public regarding the services we provide. In the past, the program has been one that was not a customer, as customer service focused as we are now. And as such, we're focused in August on getting the word out that one size does not fit all, which is what the program used to be. It was, this is the way it is. It's our way or the highway. And the program has changed quite a bit. And specifically in Kern County, we started focusing five years ago on customer service because our families are our customers. And if we want to do a good job, then we need to be able to relate to them in a way that helps them to reduce their barriers. The goal is that in doing so, we're, each family will be able to plan for their future and for their children. That hopefully leads to support that is consistent and, and allows both the parent paying support and the parent receiving the support to begin a path of collaboration with each other, but also a path for themselves, and help their children to be successful. During the last federal fiscal year, this, your Kern County Child Support Agency distributed, distributed over $98 million to the children in our county. We have over 55,000 children in our program. And I think that that right there speaks to the commitment of our team members and how they serve our customers. In August, we celebrate Child Support Awareness Month. It's become something that we take a lot of joy in doing for the community by hosting our Ready Set Back to School event. But we're also doing some things that are a little bit different this year. We are going to, starting in August, do some geo-fencing marketing. So what that means is anyone that clicks on the word child or types the word child into Google or Bing or any search engine, our, our department's going to pop up to give them information on how we can possibly help them. We're also engaging in a simplified application process, which is one of our Lean Six Sigma Project, right? So it's something that allows the family member that wants to access our services to quickly go online and complete an application that takes less than 10 minutes, where in the past, that application could take up to 45 minutes. We're also very excited because we believe in serving our customers wherever they are at. And we had an opportunity, due to General Services reaching out, to secure a little spot. It's a tiny little spot in the Delano area, which is in the admin building. And we will be opening that branch on August. We're calling it a ranch. It's a really small little office. But we're opening that location on August 25. And what we're hoping is that we'll be able to serve the Northern County customers because we have our location in Richcrest. We know it's two and a half hours to get here, right? Delano is just as far. So we're going to open a small branch there. We're hosting our Ready Set Back to School event, where we'll be distributing the backpacks and also bringing in community partners. So this year, we'll be hosting it at the Kern County Museum. Last year, we were there for the first time. We had 45 community partners that came out to provide services to the families that attended. This year, I'm really excited to announce that we've doubled the number of community partners that will be there. So we have over 90 community partners. I'm really excited. So now I need to fill the place. I need everyone to get the word out and, and let their churches, whoever you're associated with, know, so that we can get the children out there to be able to receive a backpack. We're also going to be hosting our last event in town. So we've already been to Delano and Lamont last week. Today, we're in Rosemont. On Thursday, we're in Rich, in Richcrest. And then we'll be in Bakersfield next Thursday. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge the members of my team. Each person on our team is committed to our purpose of helping families create a better life for their children. Our Child Support Awareness activities are just a small part of how they give back to the community. They do a lot of things throughout the year to serve the community. And they do it in silence because they just want to give back. And I think that that's really connected to who we are. They consistently seek efficiencies to better serve our customers. Supervisor Couch knows that because he got to participate in Launch Kern where we were there. And we had four teams that participated. So they're always thinking about ways to be able to serve our external customers, but also each other internally because it's one team that makes it happen. They take the extra time to assist each other and our customers. And through that, they've been able to become a team that is not only helping us internally, but helping our customers with their barriers, with their needs for resources. We're partnering with other community partners, such as probation. We're getting ready to engage in a process with them. And Unites, we're using that as a referral system to be able to softly hand off a team, a family to another team within the community. So these team, team members are committed to serving our community. And one thing that we're doing a little bit different this year, so here, I brought a prop, which is our backpacks to entice people to come out to our event. But we're also going to be giving out socks to help kids kick off the school year. And I'm really excited because these are efforts from my team members. So our goal is to always help our customers to identify barriers and assist them through that, provide them resources, help them to navigate the system, which is very complex when you're dealing with the courts and you're dealing with orders and you're dealing with emotional stress, right? Because when families are not together anymore, there's that emotional stress that happens. And so finances are a very delicate situation, conversation to have with families. And my team members do it in a way that hopefully helps that family to understand at that point in time, they are the most important person to us because we want them to be successful. So I want to say thank you to my team and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, Director Chavez, and your team. Next item on our agenda is item two. This is a certificate of recognition honoring Joe and Carolyn Belli for contributions and founding of the Panorama Vista Preserve, serving the greater Bakersfield area. This does not require a motion. I'll turn to Supervisor Maggert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure this morning to recognize and honor Joe and Carolyn Belli for their life's work. Not only are they residents of District Three, but their life's work rests in District Three. You know, we live in COVID times, and unfortunately, at the last minute, they're not able to be here. But we still want to honor and respect them this morning. Joe and Carolyn have been involved in, and spent most of their, probably the second half of their lives, if not longer, preserving the river corridor along. It's called the Panorama Vista Preserve, and it's over 900 acres that runs basically upriver from Manor, two and a half miles. It's a very, very long area. And what it does is it preserves the river in a way that it existed before any of us existed. It really is going back to what the river was originally, was running through the Kern County and the bottom of the valley here in the greater Bakersfield area. So I just wanted to recognize them. They are retiring. They are moving to be with are retiring. They are moving to be with their children. And it's a shame they can't be here to have me shake their hand and tell them thank you this morning. But nonetheless, I want to recognize them for their wonderful work. They have protected, enhanced, provided educational opportunities, scientific, cultural. If you go through there, it's like a, kind of like a living, walking museum with learning stations as you go along. They've just done a wonderful, splendid job, and no one else could have pulled it off. And the kids from all over our community go there and learn about what life was like here before. So I wanted to recognize them this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity, and we wish them the best in their retirement and thank them for their life's work.
Thank you, Supervisor. Next item on our agenda is item number five, Public Presentation. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action, direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. And I'll ask at this time, if there are any members of our audience that would like to make a public presentation, we ask that you state your name and please observe our two-minute time limit. Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Tom Porter, T-O-M-P-O-R-T-E-R. I'm a registered voter in Kern County. Thank you for my two minutes. I believe public confidence and the integrity of our voting process is vital to the survival of our republic. Now that confidence is low, you are in a position to do a lot to restore that confidence in Kern County. It has been demonstrated that Dominion voting machines can be programmed to produce certain results regardless of how the voters actually voted. They can also be connected to the Internet. It has been demonstrated that electronic paper ballot counters can be programmed to flip votes from one candidate to another. All of this is me thinking that paper ballots, which are hand counted in a publicly witnessed process, is the way to go. It's also important that only legal registered citizens who are alive can vote and that they vote only once in each election. I have voted by mail for years. It's easier and more convenient, but I'm thinking it is okay for me to give up the ease and convenience to ensure voting integrity. Okay, all of the foregoing need attention. If public confidence in our election is to be restored, thank you for listening and the work you will do on our election process.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. We appreciate your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Paul Lin Festi, District Three, Mike Maggard's district. I just want to say that I have to say that I have a different feeling toward the voting election process. I think a lot of the reason why it's been eroded is because a number of groups are trying to erase confidence in the system. I think that all the evidence that we've heard here from the county people, as well as nationwide, show that there was no widespread cheating in this past election. I voted with every confidence. I followed the path of my ballot from the time I mailed it to when it was received, counted, so on. I know that there is a specific, a random check that they do by law in California to check to make sure our system is completely safe and sane. A lot of this happens to do with people that are unhappy because they did not, everyone else did not vote the way they did. I can understand those feelings. But again, that doesn't mean that there has been any cheating or anything in the elections. It's just that different groups vote differently. Sometimes the numbers do reverse themselves during the middle of the night because the way ballots are counted are from different groups. Each precincts are counted. Absentee ballots or vote-by-mail ballots are coming in from all different directions. And sometimes the later ones, generally, one party tends to vote more by vote-by-mail than another party. So the numbers of when they count those votes do come in at different times in groups and batches. So I've witnessed elections. I'm 65 years old now. I've been a political junkie most of my life. I got that from my mom, who waited up when I was little, watching the election results back in the days when you did have fewer. I mean, you have a lot more people today. And some people want to have all the final vote tallies done by the next morning. Obviously, if you're going to be counting ballots by hand and cutting down the absentee ballots that do get counted, some of them up until election time, there's no way you're going to get those results by the next morning. That's just the fact of life. In fact, the county did get in all of its ballot count to the state at the very last by the due date that the state requires by law. I would rather have the ballots counted slowly and more accurately than be rushed to meet some sort of deadline the same day. So anyway, I do have the confidence. As I said, the Dominion machines have been tested and tested over and over again, and there have been no problems really seen. Yes, it's a mistake for people to say there's absolutely no one cheating in elections. There are always ballots here and there that do get called and questioned. But in almost every case, those people are actually caught. And nine times out of 10, it was a mistake that was done by those people who may have voted in the wrong place or something. Very few people have actually--
Thank you, Mr. Les. Thank you. Your time has expired. You're about a minute over.
I apologize. I was reading the clock wrong.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am Barbara Porter, B-A-R-B-A-R-A-P-O-R-T-E-R. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am Barb Porter, and I am here this morning to speak to you regarding the Dominion voting machines that are currently being used here in Kern County. The Dominion contract was annual and expired December 2021. Our election department had made no plans to replace them or have an alternate plan for voting procedures. The election department basically held you, this committee, as the registered voters of Kern County and the June election hostage as a result. The contract you signed April 9, 2022, expires December 2022. I think it is prudent that the dialogue to drop Dominion and return Kern County voting procedures back to our constitutional right for safe and fair elections. That needs to start now. On June 2, 2022, the United States Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency announced that it is possible for Dominion machines to be hacked. I do not believe any of you would state for the record that the Dominion machines cannot be hacked or cannot flip votes. That being said, to continue the use of these machines makes you complicit in ongoing lack of trust that voters of Kern County have for this process. We, the people, have been guaranteed by state and national constitutions the right for fair and accurate voting procedures. These machines do not secure our votes. Also, I'd like to know why we do not have sequential number on the ballots. There would be far less opportunity for creative printing of ballots and would assist in the audit process if necessary. I respectfully request that you take responsibility to provide election integrity to the voters of Kern County by removing all Dominion voting machines and returning to hand counting of the ballots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name's Carol Bender, and I'm in District One. I wanted to bring to your attention today a new issue with PG&E. For many years, I followed the various issues, smart meters, the four-tier system, how our electricity is billed, and now that structures two tiers. Each home has a baseline tier allowance of electricity, considered tier one, and that is the lowest cost per kilowatt. Once that allotment is used, we go to tier two. And the increase in cost per kilowatt there is 25.2%. We've all been used to these incremental increases in the kilowatt cost. And it's hard to try to eliminate that fourth-tier structure, which we were successful. And most households pass the tier one usage by mid-month here in the valley and move into that higher tier quicker. But now the issue is different. Our baseline tier one E1 allowance has suddenly decreased by nearly 5%. For years, we've been allotted 585.8 kilowatts, or 20.2 kilowatts a day, as our baseline low-cost tier. And this represents a percentage of average use. And our debate over the years has always been that this has been too low. And suddenly, our base allowance is 556.8 kilowatts, or 19.2 kilowatts, from 20.2 kilowatts. So instead of us giving more baseline in the lower tier, they're giving us 5% less. So of course, I called PG&E, called CPUC, couldn't get any decent answers. This lowering of the baseline on that allotment in tier one, along with the incremental annual changes and increases per kilowatt, are creating such large increases that our summer electric bills are only going to continue to get higher and higher. For those in disadvantaged areas that are not on solar, this is huge. So how can they justify this? We already pay hundreds of dollars more for electricity because of this pricing scheme each summer than the more temperate regions do. To be more equitable, everyone should be paying the same price per kilowatt in California, but that's not happening. Our dollars will continue to subsidize those other regions. But now with this baseline allotment change, it'll be worse. If you could look into this, it would be much appreciated. And one more thing. Originally, I thought maybe it was the solar users coming in with low usage. And the actual answer from PG&E was, no. We take the kilowatt usage that they use from their solar and add it to whatever they have to the grid. So that should not be the reason why our baseline is lowered. So again, if you could look into that, we're having no luck out here.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. If you have something in writing that you can provide to the CAO, we would appreciate it. And we'll have it distributed to the clerk. That would be great. Thank you. Any other public presentations? Okay. Okay, we have none.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Gilbert Tar. And I have some documents I'd like each of the supervisors to have a packet of. There are pictures of Ridge Route Drive, the easement, and what it used to be like, what it is now. And it needs to be opened up. There's trees planted in the road. There's a survey map in this packet. Would you like to look at The first document is a survey that the county took on their, so it's at Lebec Road and the entrance of Ridge Route Drive. And you can see the markings on it. It needs to be removed. The second picture is where the neighbor has culled off the road, taken the road from, or taken the cones from the Public Works yard and put them in the road. They've been removed. The next one is a picture of some sawhorses taken from the Public Works road, and they've been removed. The third picture is the neighbor on a tractor cutting a road, a fake road, that was a cul-de-sac. You'll notice that on your map also. It's a cul-de-sac road. The next picture, you'll see some rocks and debris that need to be removed. Next picture's rocks and debris. The next picture, you'll see him watering the rocks. Some of those have been removed right now. The next picture is the trees in the easement that need to be removed. I've been taken to jail for stealing boulders from this man. Very sad. The next picture, you'll find him pushing dirt down narrowing the road. The next picture, you'll see a survey stake in the middle of the road, and it's in his rock pile.
Mr. Tar, how many more pictures do you have? You're about 1 minute and 20 seconds over your time. How many more pictures do you have?
I have about 15.
Okay. Well, then, we will review those. We'll provide that packet to the Public Works Department, and we'll make sure that we get your response. This has been an ongoing issue that staff has looked in multiple times, as you know. But we will make sure that you get a response on these new photographs that you have supplied us. Each of the board members have it. We appreciate it.
I want to tell you that the trees have been removed. They disappeared on Friday out of the roadway. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers today? Okay, I'm seeing none then. We will move on to board member announcements or reports. Do we have anything from the board? Okay, very good. Then that takes us to our remaining item for this morning. This is item number 21, under the County Administrative Office. This is the Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Recommended Budget Discussion. And before we start, I do have something to read to notify those in attendance. I want to announce that we do have an interpreter available for anyone in the audience requiring translation of the proceedings from English to Spanish. So Mr. Fernando Lopez, I ask you please come down to the podium so we can determine if your services are required. Good morning, sir. Thank you. All right, I'll turn to Ryan Alsop, our CAO, to start us off on this discussion. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This item this morning follows a special meeting that we had last night where we went through the budget and collected and heard from the public on our preliminary budget. Ms. Martinez, our CFO, will handle
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Last night, I provided your board and the public a very detailed presentation on the recommended budget changes. Today, I am going to attempt to do a summarized version of that presentation. I want to start with our budget process. We have a very lengthy budget process that we started in January. Right now, we are at the adjustments box that you see right there. So we are here to provide your board with an update to the preliminary budget for the general and FIRE Fund, and it's also an opportunity for the public to provide additional comments and to get direction of any budget revisions before the budget is finalized August 30. This is the total of our preliminary budget. It is $3.3 billion, and it is approximately $81.6 million more than fiscal year 2021-2022. For the general fund, the increase is $33.9 million, and this is the result of including the cost of the compensation reform completed in 2021, which afforded employees a 2% step increase and a 2.5 cost of living adjustment. It also includes the cost of the minimum wage increases, implementation of mandated services, and programs for our probation department. services and programs for our probation department, and the increase in realignment funding to be transferred to the Department of Human Services. The preliminary budget for the general fund included a $5.5 million of carryforward to be used toward operations. That's what we call our budget gap. Here's a little bit more detail on our general fund. Again, our general fund that funds most of our county operations is $918.3 million. We provided $398.4 million in what we call net general fund allocations to the department. That is the property tax, sales tax, and vehicle license fees collected that we transferred to the department to cover our programs. That totaled $392.9 million, leaving that 5.5 gap. The remainder of the general fund is funded with license permits, intergovernmental revenue, and charges for services. Those funding sources are mandated to be used for specific purposes. After today's presentation, we will rebalance the budget. We'll make the adjustments to the preliminary budget based on critical needs and your board's direction and priorities. The main goal is to align one-time sources to one-time costs and ongoing resources to So we have the final assessment roll, and it is a value of $115.3 billion. This is an increase of $11.7 billion in our overall assessed value for the entire county. I want to make sure it's clear that that is the entire county. That's the assessed value that is divided between the cities, the county, the school districts, the special districts. So the overall increase in the value includes 7.32 in residential and commercial properties, and it is believed that this is the result of prices and market activity in real estate. However, the assessors has already indicated that the interest, rise in interest rates will likely reverse this trend in the coming year. Once we include this increase of $11.7 billion, our assessed value will continue to place Kern County as the lowest growth in assessed value of all our counties. This graph really represents our total assessed value, and as you can see, it is actually pretty flat. It is reflective of what we've been saying, that our assessed value has not grown compared to other counties. And while the increase in property tax revenue from oil and gas is positive news, the assessed value of oil and gas properties has declined by 50% since 2014. In 2014, oil and gas accounted for 33% of the total assessed value. Last year, it was only 11%. For fiscal year 2223, oil and gas assessed value represents 14% of the total. Other than last year, 40%, the lowest in our county history. So the large one-time percent increase of 41.4 has a minimal overall impact because it has declined so much over the years. This graph shows the percentage of our oil and gas at the bottom. And as demonstrated by this graph, assessed valuation of oil and gas is not only on a downward slope, but it's also becoming unpredictable. Last year, we saw a decline of 24% in value. This year, we have an increase of 41.4%. As a result, it is recommended that caution be taken in funding any ongoing expenditures with additional property tax revenue tied to the uptick on oil and gas valuation this year. That is likely temporary. So the increase of this assessed value for the county results in $16.5 million in property tax revenue from the preliminary budget. I had a question from one constituent asking how that's allocated, especially for the fire fund. And I want to clarify that neither your board or the CAO's office decides what percentage of property tax is allocated to the general fund or the fire fund. That is, property tax allocation is a very complicated formula that the state came up with, especially after Prop 13. And that allocation is done by our elected auditor controller. They're in charge of allocating property taxes to the county, the cities, the school districts, and special districts. As part of the budget, we work with them to estimate what that dollar is going to be, and then they finalize it in October. And I can tell your board, I'm pretty close. I mean, we work very hard to ensure that we have accurate numbers in the budget. We also had a $67 million net carryforward, and this is primarily the result of significant challenges recruiting and retaining staff, one-time property tax revenue, and one-time sales tax associated with solar projects. I'm going to stop right here before I go over the recommended changes in case your board has any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Couch.
Was that one-time property tax revenue about $25 million? So this number would be a lot less if it were not for that.
It is. The first year, we received the property tax of the taxpayer that did not pay. There was a second portion that was done in the following fiscal year, and we received approximately $7 million. So it would be $7 million lower. So last night, I went into detail of each one of the changes. I'm just going to highlight a few of them. The first item is that you'll see right there is our 5.5 budget gap. So the first item out of our ongoing $16.5 million resources go toward that budget gap. It is not a secret that the county, like many governmental entities, are having difficulty recruiting and retaining staff, especially public safety. So you'll see that $1 million line for rural housing allowance. This $1 million is set aside to establish a housing stipend for sheriff deputies assigned to hard-to-fill locations, especially in our rural areas. We hope that they get enticed to live in the community they serve. At the bottom, you'll see a class and compensation. So we recommend that any ongoing resources are to set aside for class and compensation associated with classifications that are difficult to recruit. We have several positions throughout the county that are becoming quite difficult to recruit, and I think this is an opportunity to set some money aside to help with those recruitment efforts. I want to make a correction on the $2.2 million for trial court funding. I think I stated it was AB 1869. The slide is correct. It's 1869. What the state did is, with the implementation of that Assembly bill, it limited the county's ability to collect certain criminal administrative fees without providing the county sufficient funding to backfill the loss of revenue. So this became effectively an unfunded state mandate. Part of that money also includes an audit that the state controller did, in which they require us to pay in excess of what was agreed on 1997. As I indicated last night, we are appealing that decision, and we're waiting for resolution, but we have to make the payments so we don't have, in order to avoid penalties. Our one-time allocation of $60.7 million, just like every other year, the first allocation we recommend is going to major maintenance and capital projects. We normally don't budget those in the preliminary budget, and we use this one-time resource for this one-time cost. In Attachment 8 of the staff report, I'm detailing the $41.8 million in projects that we're recommending for funding. After factoring $13.2 million in ground revenue that our general services was able to secure for parks and other sources, we are recommending a general fund allocation of $16.6 million. And we also using $3.3 million of RenewBiz Economic Opportunity Designation, this is a District 2 area, to fund these projects. Here's the breakdown of the general fund cost for the projects. So $14.6 million, inclusive of the RenewBiz designation, will cover park improvements in Rosemont, Boron, Lamont, Heritage Park, Mojave, Los Hills, Panorama Park, Castelloma Park, Virginia Park, and the Kern River Camper Grounds, just to mention a few. The $270,000 is to make improvements required by legal mandates. We're also including half a million dollars to cover energy efficiency and water conservation projects that are yet to be identified. And the remaining $8.4 million is being allocated to cover the cost of county facility maintenance required to maintain the structural integrity, reduce operational costs, provide direct public benefit, adjust replace systems that are failing, such as the two-hatchback systems that are listed on Attachment 8. I want to highlight the increase to the designations. I think that's very important for the public to understand why we're setting money aside. The first million dollars is an increase to our fiscal stability reserve. It is the county policy to maintain a general reserve of 10% of discretionary resources. The recommendation is usually $16.6 million. This $1 million allocation is recommended just to maintain the minimum 10%. The next line is the $397,500. Your board established the designation for public sector recruitment and retention to assist the sheriff with recruitment and retention of sworn personnel, and this will allow the designation to be at $2 million, which we believe is sufficient to cover the cost. $750,000 of the one-time resources recommended for life remediation. On the ongoing resources, we're allocating funding for two additional co-compliance officers to serve unincorporated areas of the county. And so this additional funding will pay for cleanup projects initiated by co-compliance. With this additional resources and staff, we feel like our efforts are going to increase in our unincorporated areas. $15 million is recommended for the retirement designation to offset future pension costs and mitigate service levels impacts. While we're seeing a reduction of our retirement costs this coming year 2223, it was primarily associated with the payoff of one of our pension bonds. You have been seeing the news, and what we're seeing is that inflation is increasing, interest rates are going up, and the stock market has lost some of its gains. While we will not have casera valuation until the fall, it was, CalPERS already announced a loss of $21 million in market losses. That is their worst performance since the Great Recession, so we anticipate an increase in our rate. And in addition, casera will be performing their three-year study where they look at the assumption, including the sum rate of return. If they make any changes to the sum rate of return, we're going to see an immediate increase to the unfunded actuarial liability and our contribution rates. Just like we did in the past, this $15 million contribution to the designation will be used to mitigate service level impacts across our departments. And the last line in that first responders' public safety communication, we are recommending the increase of $28.8 million in one-time funds available to fund a portion of the first responders and emergency response communication system. This is a critical public safety replacement needed to ensure the safety of our responders and the public. Our system is over 22 years old and is becoming exceedingly difficult to replace and maintain. This is the total of our designations after the changes I just described, how we ended the fiscal year, and the recommended changes. Now to our fire fund. Our fire department preliminary budget was $169.3 million. It included funding for all firefighter positions. However, it did not include sufficient funds to cover capital infrastructure replacement. With the additional fire fund revenue from property tax of $4.7 million, the fire department will actually use $6.7 million to do some capital replacement. The additional funds of the property tax and the $9.1 carryforward in the fire fund will be used to set a designation of $7 million. This set aside of designation is important because of the fluctuation on oil and gas, ongoing needs for capital replacement, and the potential increase for the retirement cost for safety personnel. Today's recommendation had been topfully developed and aligned with the critical needs identified by our residents over the past year, especially for public safety. This concludes my prepared remarks, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Martinez, thank you so much for your presentation and obviously for the tremendous amount of work that went into it. And I'll ask if there's any questions from the board before I go to the public.
I have one.
Supervisor Couch.
This is a small one. We talked about it last night. I just want to make sure that, I think when our Director of Animal Services stepped to the microphone, he said that he would have no trouble expending the money that we're allocating towards Span-Newton vouchers. I think that's what he said. But I know that they're full. I just want to make sure that we, that your office and he have communicated, and he's gotten a chance to express whether or not we can do it for him or not, that he's gotten a chance to express what he needs.
So absolutely. Supervisor Couch to the chair. I didn't have an opportunity to talk to him, but we did review what he spent last year, and we feel it would be appropriate to fund them at least at the $400,000 that he indicated. So we would provide, if your board chooses to do so, we can make an amendment to the final budget and include additional funding for the. One thing I want to make sure that your board knows, and I think is very important, we work significantly with our animal services department to ensure that we have a bed on staff, and I think that they were able to recruit, so I think that's also going to help them significantly.
Supervisor Couch, I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Cullen after the meeting, and essentially what he said is that, you know, there were issues with finding vendors, but they have been successful in booking several dates, and then as new dates become available, they then are aggressive in going after those dates. And so he did exceed the $350,000 allocation, as he indicated, up to $400,000. He feels that he could spend even more, and so I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Alsop last night as well about an allocation of another 100, or up to $400,000. And then if he does expend that, that we would have the ability to add to it. So Mr. Alsop, I don't know if you have any comments on that, but essentially, it's getting to the 400, and if he goes over, then we move that level up in light of the fact that we are experiencing some, I'll call it overcrowding, at the shelter. I know our staff are doing the best they can to deal with it, but we are bursting at the seams, in a sense. Mr. Alsop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We will do exactly that.
Supervisor Press?
Thank you. First of all, Supervisor Couch, thank you for pressing that issue. That's critical. We've made a lot of investment into it, and it makes sense for us to keep with it. So thank you so much for that. Did we hire a veterinarian? Do we have a veterinarian?
We do.
Oh, my. That's a big deal. Wow. I mean, it's been years in the making. That's very exciting. Congrats, Nick. Great job to the team. And, you know, the impact of killing animals is profound. I've listened to the staff, all of us have. It's one of the reasons we're so devoted to this cause. I think it's one of the best things this board has ever done, right? In, is listening to staff members talk about the killing of animals, our animals, right? It's one of many things that we have to do and contend with. I get that. But it is a significant and profound matter to the county family, right? That we take this matter serious. There are people who work there. They love these animals. They do a difficult job. We have a huge county that has a massive problem with this. The fact that we've taken it head-on is significant, and that we continue to promote this really is fantastic. Zach, thank you for your leadership on this matter, and thank you because this is just so good. And I can't believe we have a vet. Wow. That's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. The search for a veterinarian was difficult for probably a list of reasons. We have less veterinarians available in the country. And so if you're a pet owner, I think you know how difficult it is to get your animal in to be seen oftentimes. But I want to express my appreciation of the CAO's office, chiefly Mr. Alsop and Mr. Zervis, for looking at the situation creatively and creating a package for the veterinarian that we did secure that was enough to entice them to come to work here because it was an ongoing need. So I appreciate your efforts. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Ryan. Any other questions before I go to the public? Okay, seeing none. I'll now open it up to the public. Anyone who would like to make comments on item number 21?
Good morning again, Carol Bender. Kind of disappointed that there's no other speakers, to be honest with you. I have thoroughly looked at this budget, days on it, and I've communicated with Ms. Martinez, which I appreciate greatly. We've received $157 million of CARES money, $100 We've received $157 million of CARES money, $174,853,685 from the American Rescue Plan. In general, this money was to be used to weather the pandemic with this medical and social services impacts to our first responders and essential workers and economic impacts to our businesses, our county services. However, given with this huge windfall of one-time money, the goal is to be spent on one-time needs, and what some of this money has been earmarked for will help many projects. And I agree in general, too, that the Sheriff Department has a huge need. However, what's glaringly omitted from this ARPA funding plan is the huge backlog of funds needed for our fire department. They continue to get farther and farther behind with equipment needs and hundreds of millions of dollars behind in needs for fire station replacements. Our firefighters were on the line 24 hours a day during this pandemic, putting themselves at risk, providing emergency medical care, patiently dealing with the homeless, and the fires that were set throughout the county daily and currently continue with these encampments. The fire department needs and meets the qualification for ARPA funding, yet they've been omitted. Additionally, there's been no funding allotted from the general fund to the fire department. Each year, we're told that they have to use their reserves. Those reserves will never be enough to fund even one fire station, let alone all of their equipment needs. Each year, their equipment needs are estimated by your budget to grow another $7 million. Last year's budget said that the cost to build a new fire station to replace some of our aging stations, some of which are over 70 years old, could cost up to $13 million each, which I thought was a bit astronomical considering our last one, the Taj Mahal is, some people call it, cost $5.8 million. So what I'm asking is, please reconsider this ARPA budget to include paying for some of these one-time needs. There won't be any cheaper, getting any cheaper as time goes by with inflation. If we want to help retain firefighter staff, this is the time. They want good conditions, they want good equipment. We've hired a lot of employees because of extra money we've gotten from Cal Fire, but where's the equipment for these new guys, and where are the accommodations for these guys? So Sheriff, yes, but why not fire? They are an essential service. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Alsop, would you care to respond to any of those questions about the firefighter budgets, specifically the equipment replacement plans that we have?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and Elsa, ask Elsa to follow back on my comments. You know, the fire chief has given us his budget request, and we're funding that budget request. Your board last year provided $10 million in new equipment needs. I think we've delivered a slew of new fire trucks, fire engines, purchased new bulldozers, new battalion chief vehicles, there are others. There are station repairs that are happening. I mean, there are certainly, to Ms. Bender's point, there are certainly, there is a need for, significant need for a new station repair. A lot of our stations are old. I think we're still paying, frankly, on paying for some of the stations we've built recently. We're still paying for those. But again, as Ms. Martinez outlined, there's another $6.7, almost $7 million in capital outlay for the fire department in this budget. And beyond that, we will be bringing a final, this is a preliminary budget recommendation, we'll be bringing a final budget recommendation forward, Board, in late August, and at that time, I suspect that we will also be bringing forward, because we're talking about it internally now, a sort of a reorganized set of plans on ARPA that does a few, makes a few changes, puts before your board some suggestions on a few changes for that money. Hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Sandra Placencia. I'm a policy advocate with Leadership Council, as well as the co-chair for the Economic Justice Coalition, and we work along with residents at Leadership Council. Last night, we heard from Mikan Orquillín, a resident of Fuller Acres. He has not seen any infrastructure improvements in Fuller Acres in about 30 years that he's lived there. Their water, or the community has a lot of needs. Their water has 123 TCP, they don't have sidewalks, speed bumps, no safe and equitable infrastructure, and nothing to keep them safe and secure. They live next to a refinery that pollutes their air. A lot of the folks have swamp coolers, so all of the bad air from the refinery goes inside of their homes, and they have to drive 15 to 20 minutes to either Lamont or Bakerfield to get clean water, and they have to pay for that water apart from the water that they already pay for monthly, because they can't use it because it's contaminated. In addition, Fuller Acres needs equitable infrastructure. They have unsafe sidewalks. There's enough, like, side on the, there's like a dirt road, and then there's the actual road, and that can be used for sidewalks. We asked the county to allocate time and money for this year's budget to adding sidewalks and proper infrastructure to this community. We also asked that you work with Caltrans to add traffic signs along Highway 184 to help with traffic improvement, and also the safety of the children who board the school bus. In addition, the infrastructure and water issues, Fuller Acres is right next to the refinery, and then, like I said, due to the poor filtration systems of the swamp coolers, all of that goes inside, so they're not safe either inside their home or out. So we asked that the county looks into funding programs for air filtration inside of the home. And then we would also like to see a park in Fuller Acres as well, and that's something that community residents have brought up in the past few years. So thank you so much for your time, and we hope to see these recommendations allocated in this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Couch?
Can I get you to leave your contact info with our CAO? And the reason for that is I want you to be involved with the residents of Fuller Acres that are engaged, at least in the water project out there. There's a lot going on there, and just from your comments, I want you to be engaged in that, because it's an awful lot. And if you're going to be advocating for that particular gentleman, he needs to really understand what all is happening out there before it just happens. Thank you.
Mr. Alsop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I wanted to ask Mr. Zervis, our COO, to make some comments on this. I know he's been working quite a bit with Leadership Council on projects in Fuller Acres.
Thank you, and Chairman and members of the board. Well, we are, I have been personally in our offices, working with Leadership Council on a number of items in Fuller Acres to make some improvements. Specifically, we have a project ongoing right now that would create a new CSA in that area, and the county would be funding the installation of roughly 30 streetlights, both along the highway and the interior streets. So we're working with PG&E and Leadership Council in the creation of that CSA. They would pay for the ongoing cost of those lights, but the residents would, but the county has identified funding to actually provide for the installation of that infrastructure. So that project is moving forward. In addition to that, at your last board meeting, your board took action to acquire a tax-d defaulted parcel in Fuller Acres. That parcel is in this budget to be converted into a pocket park for Fuller Acres. So we have funding identified in this budget to do that, and we're moving forward. We should have acquisition of that parcel in roughly in September, October of this year. So that's moving forward as well. And as Supervisor Couch mentioned, our office is engaged in a larger project to try to deal with the water quality issues involving the state and the water providers in that area, which the county is not one, but we're helping to try to facilitate that project. So those are a few of the things that are ongoing right now in Fuller Acres. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers?
Good morning. My name is Smireo. I'm here on behalf of the Economic Justice Coalition to uplift and support the investments in community needs like infrastructure, housing, air, and water quality. It's really great to hear that these projects are being addressed, because we do believe that these types of investments, they don't only improve the quality of life for our residents, but they can also help address root causes of public safety concerns. We know that that's a real concern for our community, but we are meaning to address these social problems in more fundamental and meaningful ways. Currently, funding or expanding funding for a system of crime deterrence through policing and criminalization fails to address those types of root causes of public safety. If deterrence were entirely sufficient to prevent violence and ensure public safety, then our expanded investments in policing would meaningfully reflect that in the crime rates. But effective violence prevention is going to require investments in communities and organizations outside of just policing and the justice system. So through our coalition, we've heard of various different investment needs. We've also heard community want to prioritize investments in mental health resources, prevention intervention programs, healthy living programs, because these types of investments also help to address some of the societal issues that police currently have to respond to. Additionally, these long-term solutions to safety issues are going, we're also going to require, you know, long-term solutions are going to require investments in affordable housing, mental health resources, substance use programs. For example, there is a study that has shown that even simply increasing access to substance use treatments reduces violence, and effects were particularly pronounced for serious violence, including homicides. So we're here to advocate that economic development and quality of life investments be prioritized as a way to also address root causes of safety issues in our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Gustavo Guirre, with Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment. And I want to start first thanking Supervisor Couch. This is a picture of before on Lydall Avenue. It's difficult to see, but I will leave the picture. It's just flooded, drenched, and this is a picture of after, you know, just paved, dirt, you know. You create, with your support, you created a huge change to that street. Thank you for that. And I was watching...
You're going to talk about San Jose Avenue next, aren't you?
Sure. I'm going that way. And the San Jose Avenue is, there are three streets in that neighborhood. It's Lydall, San Jose, and KC Avenue. This is a map, you know, Google map of there. As of last night, I was watching the meeting, and because of the work on Lydall Avenue, the county acquired the right-of-way of the three streets. And I think last night, you know, San Jose residents, they were asking for support, and actually was taking these pictures when I met Marcela, the girl that came and made comments last night, that how we get connected and start supporting them. And initially, they said that the utility company didn't want to support them because they didn't know that the county had the right-of-way. So I think I know that Ivan, he works under my direction, and he told me that he met with Mr. Alsop after the meeting. I know that you can create an impact. Thank you for the support, and my sense is that you are going later this week to see the street. Thank you for that one. You make a lot of, you know, changes when you do that, and yes, there is a lot of things that you, that, you know, the county needs, but we want to recognize, you know, that you are doing things. I've been in Lamont, you know, repaving, not the greatest way of doing it, but making progress there. Also, the Erickson and Sycamore cross there, routes, a report of the traffic was there that a lot of accidents happened there, and there was a four-stop, you know, there that was installed. Thank you for that. And Mr. Alsop have the list of all the other projects, and we want to see, you know, those moving forward, and obviously, you know, as always, we are here to participate in any way possible to keep pushing those projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Who will be next, please? Okay, I'm seeing none, then. I'll return to the board for any comments or questions remaining, and the requested action is to receive and file.
I'll just thank staff for all your hard work and make a motion to receive and file.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And Mr. Alsop, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is our preliminary budget. We'll take up a final budget, and normally I would reserve doing this until then, but I did want to recognize, obviously, Elsa, who is our CFO, but all of her budget staff who are, not all sitting here, but some of whom are sitting here. Just want to thank publicly the CAO's budget team, who are all excellent at what they do. Thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. And so for the public, when will be the next date that we'll be discussing the budget?
We will have budget hearings on August 30th, Tuesday, Tuesday at 9:00 AM.
Thank you. August 30th, Tuesday, Tuesday, 9:00 AM. Yes. Yeah. Okay, you have a motion, a second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Peters?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to the conclusion of our business for this morning. We do have several items to consider in closed session. Under the County Administrative Office, we have item 31, and under County Council, we have items 31, 32, and 34. And so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So moved.
We are adjourned.